I guess we have Fire Department Kitchen remodel. I guess one review of the proposals received to date.
Excuse me, may I make a comment?
I'm not open yet, Stephen. Who wants to start this?
I have three bids before you, who's the DIR contractors, one who's not. It's just kind of a question of what direction we want to go, kind of John Pope on getting a new kitchen and work on keeping cost down, some other purchasing options like using a place like IKEA from some of the other cabinet makers, or if we want to go the RFP sealed bid route, which Eric and I can get started on tomorrow if that's the pleasure of the board. I personally feel like, worked with this a fair amount of time, and I trust John Pope, he is a registered contractor, he's worked on a number of public works projects, I think that with some of the different possibilities of purchasing equipped cabinets or stove from, directly from other vendors, that we can keep the costs even lower than $5,000 or $2,000 of a bidding car is presented.
Do we have, the RFP never went out?
The RFP has not gone out, it's been tweaked a handful of times. It's like 98 pages, it's a lot of legal reads.
Yeah, I know, I printed the whole thing.
Yeah, so if, really it just comes down to whether, if you want to use the RFP sealed bidding process, might I call you through that with a sharp pencil?
It's a matter of saying we'd be happy to use it. Does anyone on the board have any issues at all if we ask the district manager to speak about the reply we got from the council, which was something we requested at the last meeting? Sure. Anyone have an objection to that?
No.
Eric, could you give us some details about the response we got from our attorney?
Sure. Well, at the last meeting I asked him, you know, specifically kind of about, I gave him background on the project, what we were doing, and asked for legal guidance on the informal bidding process that had taken place so far versus they need to put out RFP. His opinion is that the district should probably issue an RFP.
Probably.
Well, they give him a, the district should issue an RFP.
Okay.
I can say that we've done a number of, and I'm not saying past practices, because that's precedent or is correct, but we've done a number of projects that fall within SBA 54 where we did not use the sealed bidding process.
An example?
The pickup truck we just bought for the parts department?
That's not construction, right?
It's, I mean, we're, it's a capital purchase. The trailer that the parts staff currently use, that didn't go out to a sealed bid. The new air conditioning units that were purchased for the CSD, where the threshold was $1,000 for SBA 54, we did not use a sealed bidding process. So, this is so-
Which one was over $25,000?
No, it was, at the time of the air conditioning project, it was $1,000. It moved to $25,000 within the last six months.
So, are we talking about SB 854 covering any capital purchase, or those capital purchases? Or do we have to go after a vendor?
SB 854 covers public works projects, other capital purchases, that the code states, purchase of materials and supplies for the construction or completion of building structures or improvements.
Right, okay. Thank you. Okay, questions? It sounds like, from an informal standpoint, if we were to accept a bid, we could do, we could start the clock ticking relatively quickly, and hopefully bring this in relatively quickly. Is that true or not true?
From a talk standpoint, I would agree with you.
Okay, all right. The RFP, if I understand it properly, would go out and solicit bids, and we reconvene sometime at the end of the next month, end of September, and then make a choice at that meeting, and then there would be probably some time to figure out when whoever the choice is could start, right? So that would probably be a lengthier timeline, is that also likely?
Yes.
Okay, so, there's a third option, and that is, we do what we absolutely need to do in order to make sure that firefighters have a sanitary kitchen facility, and in my mind, after having just visited the facility, it's the water wall that really needs to be replaced. The cabinets that are hanging off the wall look like they're serviceable, I don't see any reason for them to have to be replaced. Is there any possibility in your mind that we could bring this in with just what we need for less than $25,000 and get going?
I would say that you probably could, but I wouldn't recommend it.
Why?
You're gonna have a hobnob in the kitchen in your firehouse, a building that the community belongs to, I mean, is that, how, would we do the kitchen in the community center?
Well, if you're, I'm basically thinking of function over form at this point.
I understand that too, but I mean, we've thought six months, I'm of the opinion if it takes us an extra 30 to 60 days, then we'd do it right. And right being a complete kitchen that's functional, matching, nice?
Throwing away serviceable cabinets and replacing them, correct?
Serviceable but old?
Go to garage sales and get your stuff. Three appliances.
But, you know, that is a way to go.
Yes.
Okay, and if time is an issue, which it has been, we've already waited, I think, six months?
Correct.
Okay, since this thing had to be taken apart, that is an option. So, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't want to discount it.
Fair enough.
We also have the legal counsel's opinion that we, in order to do this right, we should do a reissuing the RFP, going through the bidding process. I think there are risks on both sides. If I understand the risks, they're, okay, we go ahead with the informal process and we open ourselves up for possible litigation. Unknown, but risky, okay? Could be as much or more than the cost of the kitchen in the first place.
True.
Okay? If we follow the rules, we delay. I understand, and we also risk possibly having, probably having the cost go up, and also possibly having somebody who is currently the lowest informal bidder walk away. Do I understand this right?
Yes, so there's all those things.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
No, you're fully versed at this point, no better than I am.
Anybody else?
I, I mean-
Go ahead.
I think that, I would just like to see this get moved along as efficiently as possible. I mean, I see the risks and the balance.
Can you just speak, I'm sorry, I can't hear you, can you speak up a bit?
I mean, I sort of support anything to move this forward as quickly as possible, so I prefer not to go out for the RFPs and, you know, take a chance on it, but up to the board.
Just, I'm just looking at John Pope's proposal, which is the lowest informal bid he had, and it's sort of interesting. There's about $7,500 in allowances for appliances that we could go out and buy. I assume that John would get a contractor's discount, and then add his profit and overhead to that number, which he shows is 15%. I assume if we went out and bought those, maybe we wouldn't get the contractor's discount, but we'd probably come out about the same place.
And I spoke with John about that, and I said, you know, is there any cost savings if we were to buy directly and have them delivered here? And he said, he said, really, it's about the same at the end of the day, just because the contractor's discount isn't much, he has a slight markup for his inconvenience, and then, but the price we're gonna get them at is about the same, including his markup.
Is that what Mike explained?
Yes.
But, you know, in here, he has listed a six burner range, I don't know what the conditions of the range that's in there.
It's currently a three burner range that has six burners. The parts have been breaking down on it, and he just can't get them anymore.
Okay, and the refrigerator, the same story?
The refrigerator was one that was donated by one of the firefighters about two years ago.
Okay, so then it's logical that they'd be here, but I'm just, what I'm doing is looking at the bid, and just so there's no confusion, I'm the one that suggested that John contacted you. I know him from a project we worked on in Sausalito, the city, with him, and I also know him from scouts for years. So, there's no conflict, I don't get anything out of this.
No.
I wanted to at least make sure everyone understood that. But, if you were to take out the four appliances, and maybe, I had a great, in the mail today, I got a great brochure from Ferguson, they have a lot of really fancy stuff, we have kitchen and bathroom hardware, but there's probably more things that we could, if we were going to do it that way, that we could do to cut John's price down. The other thing that was being suggested is, maybe the upper cabinets get left to a subsequent stage, so we can get this thing going. But, you know, I'm used to a public agency, fully RFP sealed bids for any project over about $20,000, $25,000, that's my background. And when you were talking originally, you were, the goal was to get something for around $20,000 to $25,000, so that made sense to go out looking for proposals, but even if we were to do some of this ourselves, cut a little down, so maybe we're gonna get it down to $35,000. And I'm concerned that a contractor who doesn't do the work says, wait a minute, I never got noticed that this was going out to bid, and I could have done it for less, and so I'm gonna sue you for cheating me out of the opportunity to have a project. And that, that's my real concern.
I can tell you that, I believe Eric, but I know I am prepared to finalize the RFP tomorrow, put an ad in the New York Independent Journal, advertising that we're going to issue an RFP, because we're required to do that seven days prior, and then issue the RFP next Friday.
All right, I don't need to burst your bubble, in fact, I have a tentative agreement that we, you guys, work on it tomorrow, but there is a huge hole in the RFP, it's gonna take some considerable work to fill up.
If you're talking about materials?
Yeah.
We've done that, have that.
Okay, well, it isn't in there.
I understand that, but I have the information. I was hoping that-
You weren't gonna have to do that.
I wasn't gonna have to do that, but I have the information on materials.
Okay.
So, I think we all share the frustration of how long this disaster has been going on and dragging out, and we are all frustrated for different reasons. I mean, firefighters obviously guess already have a workable kitchen, I think the administration, we learned a lot about DIR, legal boundaries, and the law, the law was changed in the process. I'm so sick and tired of the subject matter, and I wish it was done months ago. I'm also sick and tired of the fact that we have to be looking at these prices, because it's my first exposure to an RFP, I have to admit, but I also did my kitchen 10 years ago for $15,000. And, you know, four people are sharing this kitchen every day, I mean, I may not be, you know, as well-built as you guys, and I may not be slamming the doors, maybe when you get upset, but I think it would, it would have worked, really, that's what I'm saying, and IKEA kitchen would be an absolute fine option. Having said that, we would have to install the cabinets, or have them installed by somebody, right? And we have to have an electrician who will bring the kitchen up to code, because we don't want to have a fire in our firehouse. And we, we would need also a certified plumber or some sort of, just to have a warranty that, that the work is being done correctly, and not have a, you know, Joe Schmo to kind of, you know, come and figure things out. So, having said that, we need a certified electrician, certified plumber, we need some kind of cabinetry, we could be getting the appliances ourselves. Could, could we do it under $25,000?
I'm not of the opinion that we could. Next one, I see.
I just, given how prolonged this process has been so far, I would imagine that if we were to take it on, it would take another year before the firefighters have a kitchen, which is unacceptable. So, so far we have only received one bid that was under $25,000, and that was by a company that was not DIR registered, therefore could not be doing this work on our premises. Because it's a public works project, and because it's at $25,000 or above, in my opinion, it leaves us no choice but to issue an RFP. I don't want to have the district involved in another, in another litigation and waste our money on that. It's frustrating, but I think at some, at this point, we really need to go with RFP. Do I want to spend $60,000 on the kitchen? Absolutely not. Because I think it's outrageous, it's very wasteful, and I don't, I don't have that money, and I don't want our residents to, I mean, I might be living in a parallel universe, maybe, maybe $60,000 is a going price for a kitchen. Could somebody enlighten me? I mean, I just might be a cheapskate.
I think so, the question myself.
So, in my opinion, we are forced to go with an RFP, but it doesn't mean that we're going to award a project to a bidder who will come in at $60,000. I just don't want to be spending $60,000 on the kitchen, I'm sorry. Am I the only one?
No, you're not the only one.
Well, how much are you willing to shave or raid a kitchen over?
Please, 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 let's, let's.
Well, if I can answer any questions for you, I'm happy to do it, but really, I will follow whatever direction we choose to go tonight, and do my best to complete that project.
Question for Eric. If we do indeed issue this RFP, is this the first RFP we've ever issued as a district?
No, we haven't done one in my time, but they did put out a RFP for the landscape contract, I'm sure of, a-
Tennis courts.
Right, okay. So, I think honestly, we've got a precedent of the fact that, you know, in the past, we have actually recognized the need for an RFP, put things out to bid, solicited the bids, got them, and awarded them. We did not do that in this case, so, you know.
And I would agree with the chief's earlier statement, I'm sure, I mean, by prior projects that they probably should have done, and they didn't, be it on ignorance or neglect, I don't know, but, you know, to his point is certainly a valid point, too.
Because I think a lot of these things were just capital asset purchases and not construction projects.
Right, some of them, I think, probably on the AC one, and again, I would have to look, I don't know what exactly the threshold was at that point in time, the threshold for bidding has always been $25,000, the threshold for prevailing wage used to be $1,000, I don't know when that changed prior to that, I do know when it changed and moved it to levels of either 15 or 25,000, and to his point, that happened when the state budget was passed, less than a month and a half ago.
Well, I would just simply say, you know, I understand the timing issue, and I understand the need to get particularly water service back into the firehouse, that's a big one as far as I'm concerned. I would say, I would suggest we have two options, and that is, to reduce our specifications and get what's absolutely necessary in there as soon as possible, and keep it under $25,000, or we go out with an RFP. That would be my suggestion.
Some question.
Go ahead.
Is there, and I don't know, is there any wiggle room by us considering this to be an emergency project?
Six months.
Yeah, I don't-
That's why it's an emergency.
I don't think you're gonna fly on the emergency project part, I think the mold remediation that the chief was quickly handled, certainly, I don't, I don't consider this necessarily an emergency, and I think that you would have a tuxedo.
We're gonna have a motion? Do one of two things, is that a read part?
Well, can I have one or another?
So I'm asking, but I don't know which way.
Given my brothers, of those two options, I would prefer to roll with an RFP for a full kitchen.
I kinda like Jeff's idea of just getting it done. So, also understand that even if we go through the RFP, if we get back $100,000 bids for the kitchen, we're probably not likely not to award it.
Again, that's a poor decision, definitely.
Yeah, understood. How much work is necessary to get the kitchen up and running? From what I understand, there's electrical upgrades that need to happen irrespective of what else is done, so there's clearly the water, the water wall that has to be the same, the plumbing, the wastewater, all that kind of stuff has to be done.
I think if you were to go, you're, you're still gonna need a full permitting to do it, at which point they're gonna make you bring things up to code, which I don't think that there's faulty electrical, I think that there's probably a lack of electrical over there, considering that it was done, that makes you throw in a few extra outlets, things like that, that's gonna happen with any permitting project.
Do we have to set up an RFP for something like that, because it would be under $25,000? If it's under $25,000, we can just do it, I mean, time would dissipate quite rapidly if we did that. And they'd get something where they can actually clean up after themselves, clean their produce, do whatever they have to do in a sanitary situation. So that, that's an idea. Which way should we head? I'll open it up to the public. Any ideas? Stephen?
Well, actually, I have a number of things. First, first thing I want to address, and I don't know if you had a chance to read what I wrote to you, this does become part of the public record, by the way, because it's in writing. The Brown Act was violated tonight, it was not posted in a location that was freely accessible to members of the public, and so any decision you have tonight can be challenged and reversed, okay?
What was it posted?
This meeting was not posted, it should have been posted publicly. It was emailed, right?
It was on the website.
It was on the website, it was not published in a paper.
Yes, it was.
When?
In the IJ.
When?
A couple days ago.
I think it's either the city or the-
That's why I'm here tonight, because I read about it in the IJ. Get your facts straight for once. Eric?
I did, I did get my facts straight, and I spoke to the IJ, who may be following up on this, okay? And I also did speak with a lawyer as well.
Posted in the FOIA, I'll grant you.
Is it posted where you post notices, or posted someplace else?
Posted where we post notices.
Outside the door?
No, it's not.
Personally, but if they're, Stephen, I know it's there, but-
Okay, I photographed it, I just photographed it tonight, it's not there, okay? So, you have to put it in two places. So, but anyhow, that's a kind of separate subject. Yeah, you guys have options, and I'm surprised that after all this time, you don't have a definitive answer. It's very clear that we don't have to do an RFP if it goes under $25,000. Now, I guess I'm kinda like Isabella, I'm cheap, and I know how to get things done. And I've also worked in the auction business, I've worked with restaurants, I know how they outfit their kitchens. And my recommendation is to get pre-standing commercial, commercial grade stainless to put in there. We do not know what the future of the fire department is. It likely is to be merged with another fire department, and if they choose to move the fire station to a different location, then that money that will be invested in this luxury kitchen will be all wasted. And even in the preliminary plans that you created, it showed that there was, the cost for cabinetry is only $4,200 bucks, if you get it, you know, the low-grade IKEA cabinets. I just think that we need to be spending money on other things, and of course, the, I don't know if you can all agree, but the fire department deserves a kitchen, but this was a crisis and a problem that really, really did not need to happen, it could have been addressed very quickly. And if you do decide to go with John Pope Construction, I think there's question in the public bidding process that you may have already poisoned that relationship. I don't know enough about that to say for certain, but also, having been involved in public bidding, I know that there's very strict ethical requirements concerning contact, in that they might have been breached before we knew any better. There was an admission by the chief earlier that we've done a lot of stuff not according to the RFP process, and that only makes it worse. And should this come for review, I think there, it's very likely that it will be thrown out, and there'll be costs to the district that really shouldn't have to happen. So, I urge you to think like it's your money that you're being spent, not government money, because it's all, prolongs all of us, and do the right thing. If you need specific, if you need specific quotes for commercials, and I can probably find something for you, but I, from what I understand, you didn't even pursue that option, because I guess you don't like staying with steel, so.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else? Get ready, Eric.
Have you already, did you already have an estimate of how much it would cost to do the repairs without an RFP?
Not the repairs itself, what we were talking about, right?
Not what was brought up today, no.
So there's no estimate at this point of how much? So you don't even know if you'd be like for $25,000, or under $25,000, correct?
Well, five months ago, we could have done it for $25,000.
There was, there was one bid that was submitted under $25,000, but it was, at that point, violating the law that required public entities to have all work performed at a prevailing wage rate.
True.
Excuse me, Linda, just not even answering your question, so can you please not interrupt me? So, that's the reason we were not able to go with the kitchen remodel for under $25,000.
And they were registered.
But now-
They were not DIR-registered, because they did not guarantee that all the work would be performed at prevailing wage.
So what's changed now?
You've been educated.
So, at that, when we received that bid, the threshold was $1,000 successfully, subsequently, sorry, it was raised to $25,000, at which point we were like, great, let's go with this company, that company backed out.
Was that John Pope Construction?
No.
The reason I'm asking, I know a number of contractors, I work for Rowan Builders Association, and I, I'm wondering, I mean, with all the names of contractors that I know, if I could hopefully help to bring in a lower bid? Might be possible. John Pope is one of our members, and I'm just thinking, I don't have any idea how big the kitchen is, or what it costs to redo a kitchen, but if you could do it for under $25,000, that would be the way to go, and then is there an option if that's impossible the way to go. And then is there an option, if that's impossible to do, to then do an RFP?
I think the only drawback, it's absolutely reasonable, and I understand what you're saying. I think the only drawback is that it further delays the process. But it is a good idea. I mean, I was thinking, actually, like, with all the people in the community, why not reach out and say, you know, can you make it happen under twenty-five?
We alone probably have about a hundred contractors that we recall in our association. So there's a lot of people out there that would be able to do the job.
I thought I recall that, you know, Erica, she talked to Rowan Builders Association about looking for some names of contractors.
I just went on their website and started calling contractors one day, and they threw out ten names. Guys were busy. No one was really interested.
It is hard because they are busy.
I talked to Thompson Builders, who was gonna have one of their guys maybe do it as a side job, and he never came down. So it was tough.
Thompson's huge, and that might make a difference. Maybe some of the smaller, more hungry contractors can fit it in. I don't know. Or some of the bigger ones that do have some more flexibility. So it would be hard, but it's not impossible. And there's a lot of people to call, reputable people.
Is there a way where you can contact them and then I'll?
Well, I could put out a notice tomorrow.
Specs. But they have to be DIR registered, too.
Right.
And the little guys.
No, I could put out, I could put out a notice without specs, just saying, the Rowan Wood Fire Department is seeking this information. Please give them a call and put your phone number in there, and they could give you a call.
Clarify, they'd have to be DIR if it's over twenty-five.
Right.
I could put that in there.
To keep it under, we're gonna have to change the specifications. I don't think there's any way around that.
Oh, no, absolutely. I'll keep it under twenty-five thousand. It's a, it's a third of a kitchen.
Right, correct. I tend to agree with you, but I recently did buy kitchen. I have a pretty good sense of what it costs. Linda?
Yeah, one thing, I don't know if dish, garbage disposal is listed. I know this is only gonna be a thousand dollars or five hundred dollars, whatever. But I was looking through some of these in hopes. I don't think it had garbage disposal on it. So you want my old one? Anybody?
Erb?
I just wondered if you wanted to add garbage disposal.
When and if we meet tomorrow, there's some inconsistencies between what John has, unless he's saying he's gonna follow the plans, I believe the plans should require a disposal. And maybe that's part of the accessories allowance or something.
We're talking, the garbage disposal is sixty dollars, people. We are way in the weeds at this point.
Well, the other, the other thing is, I don't believe you can buy a commercial dishwasher for five hundred dollars. And we keep buying regular old dishwashers and replacing them every five or six years. These firemen wash dishes every single day. It's not like my house where I wash them once or, once or twice a month. Cause I just don't. Okay. But these dishwashers have been replaced four or five times. So in any case, that's another consideration. You do not have a commercial dishwasher listed. But one of the things I was going to say is, if you're willing to spend eighty grand for the park and rec three buildings, actually, one building for a few trucks, one building for doing work, maintenance, and another little fencing area to store stuff. That's basically what the maintenance building is. It's three sections, and you're willing to spend eighty grand? Why are you being so cheap with the fire department? I would never wanna live in a place, I mean, my kitchen is twenty-five years old. When I put my kitchen in, I refaced, cheap, 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 refaced, got the cheapest appliances, refaced. It was twenty thousand dollars. That was the cheapest I could find twenty-five years ago. You should've taken my offer of money to pay for this four months ago. It would've been in and done. I think you're doing a disservice. This fire station is going to stay here forever. We have thousands of people that need the fire department right where it is. The fire department's not gonna move. And I don't think the county would let it move. We need this right in this area. So as far as I'm concerned, you ought to, you shouldn't put in something to slip shot. Oh, well, we could go to garage sale and get some tables and countertops and old stoves. And there's a garbage disposal for sale right now, actually for free, I think, next door. Why don't you do that? What are you trying to do to our firefighters? Are you trying to make them live in a slum? Do you want everything to keep breaking down every couple of years? Oh, okay, we're gonna have old cabinets, and gee, five years from now, they might all fall off the walls. We're gonna have a non-commercial dishwasher. Five more years, we're gonna have to buy a new one. We're gonna get it next door, garbage disposal. We're gonna get it. Okay? You understand what I'm saying?
Granting is okay, Linda.
I'm not granting. What I'm, I'm doing is logical.
Kinda going a little overboard.
When you are being logical, you look at the whole picture. You don't look at individual pieces that you could just throw in.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, just wanted to chime in with my two cents. You guys are really proud of the community center that you have here, and the fire department, and the history of it. And the decisions you make reflect your outcomes. And I think whether it's the CSD buildings, or the fire department, or the parks, the decisions that you make are gonna be reflective to the community. And I think it's the, in this case, the firehouse, these guys have already gone six months without a kitchen. And I know there's been a little rumbling and stuff like that. But, I mean, if that was like your own home, your spouse or significant other would, you know, choking you by now. And, you know, I think the patience are beyond that. Whether you wanna piece something together, I think the bottom line is, is that you wanna be able to have a functioning kitchen, something that's reflective of your decision, your community. And is, you know, if you get into a price, even when you go to an RFP, which at this moment, I would say, I hope you go to an RFP. But at the back end of it, it sounds like if it's over a hundred thousand dollars or over sixty, you're not gonna be doing anything. So you're gonna be spinning around again, and we'll be probably a year at this. So I just would like to see you go to an RFP, put it out there, get a professional in here, and go to work on the kitchen. I think it's, these guys deserve it. The community deserves it.
Yep. I think the most logical and fastest way to deal with this problem, based on where we are today, is to go with an RFP. The one thing that I thought was gonna be tight consuming, apparently we have, I'm suggesting that we put in this RFP a number of allowances or alternatives that give us a place to cut if we really have to, based on the bids we get. And move on.
Okay.
Or the alternative, we could notice this for a meeting next month, as Steven suggests, and not do anything for a month.
Erb, is there a way to, for us to open some room in terms of what kind of work we do, not only in the specs, but also in just lowering overall price of the RFP? Cause I would, like, why wouldn't we just go with RFP that's, that's a price, let's say thirty-five thousand to forty thousand dollars price cap?
I don't understand. There's no price in the RFP till the contractor comes back.
No, but there is an estimate that we are kind of noting in the RFP.
We could put a five thousand dollar estimate and hope they really get it.
I think what she's trying to say, I think what she's trying to say is that you don't specify top-end materials. You specify materials that are basic, but will wear well and last for a long time.
And we, like, A, B, we don't need commercial grade anything. We, I think we need a good quality refrigerator stove and whatnot, but it's not a place that serves food and sells, it's not a place that sells food. So we don't need a commercial grade anything. We need good serviceable quality items. But just the, again, in addition to saying, you know, let's, let's not put a, I don't know, whatever the fancy brand of dishwasher is, put a, I don't know, let's say GE, whatever the, you know, good quality thing is. But also in addition to that, on the suggested price or suggested range, kind of give the contractor a ballpark of where we're aiming. So a person who is going to submit RFP for a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, we need another, because that's not really worth it.
Well, that's the whole purpose of the estimate, is to let the big guys, if it's a big number, bid on it, and the little guys don't, and vice versa. That's the only reason for the estimate, is to let the contractors know what's kind of expected, so they know whether it's worth their trouble or not to bid on it.
So that's actually what I mean.
But we could have alternatives, like as an example, we could say in the base bid, it's a granite countertop. But as an alternate, you have a Formica countertop. And if push comes to show, there is a place to go to a less expensive item. I'm not saying that's a good example, but just an example.
Yeah, same. Anybody else? Why can't you do this in phases? Do the electrical and plumbing right away. Get that done, and then do phase two, and then phase three. But get something started right away. If the infrastructure is part of the problem, do that first. You got plumbing, you know, I'm not familiar with, you know, everything, but you mentioned there's a plumbing problem. Well, get the plumbing problem done. That's not gonna be twenty-five thousand. And then get whatever electrical you need. And then do a separate project later on. I don't know why you can't do the infrastructure stuff right away by itself. It's gotta be done anyway. Make it a separate project.
Well, I know from a, from a legal scheme thing, SB eight fifty-four has a clause in it that essentially speaks to trying to carve up or phases in order to keep them within, within the twenty-five thousand dollar limit. So that would probably get caught. But, I mean, it's a great suggestion. I'd love to see it done, too. But I believe that there's a clause in there that restricts that.
Well, I think President Trump was gonna take care of that.
No, we're, sorry, but we're in California. Has nothing to do with the United States. Still, yeah. Anything else?
I do have one little bit. I wanna go back to Park and Rec Commission meeting where the subject was the kitchen here in the community center.
We're not talking about that now.
I, that's only the beginning of my sentence. Will you please listen to the end of my sentence? Thank you. I'm thinking that, I know one hundred percent for sure, that Isabella, when she was on the commission, wanted a commercial stove. Now, why, you just said no commercial, any, no, any commercial appliances, none whatsoever. So you've changed your mind or you're distinguishing between one side of the building getting commercial appliances and the other side of the building not? And it does not make sense to me that you would just come right out and say, no commercial anything.
Well, there are some things that you say don't make any sense to me, but the reason, well, let me put it this way. Originally, I said, because we are renting this kitchen together with the call for weddings, receptions, and it generates the community center as millions of dollars annually, I want it to be in a good shape, as you know. Also, geez, what's her name? Kimberly suggested that we could rent out the kitchen to resident bakers and cooks who could, what, let me finish now. I let you finish, right? So, and also Shane was at this meeting as well, and enlightened all of us to the cost of changing the kitchen from a non-commercial to a commercial grade kitchen, to the cost that it would involve. And I did not follow this idea any longer, given the fact that it was so expensive, so prohibitively expensive. So did this thought come up? Yes, but maybe you didn't listen very carefully, because later on, I did not follow through on that. Therefore, I'm not distinguishing between one house of, one side of the house and the other side of the house.
Thank you.
Based on whatever you think I'm doing. The truth of the matter is, the firefighters, that's their workplace. That's not their house, that's their workplace.
Yes.
Okay? So comparing this kitchen to a house kitchen, it's a stretch, in my opinion. However, they do deserve a functioning kitchen and a good shape, and I agree with that. This side of the house, keep in mind, is a revenue generating side of the house. And that's why we also should be keeping this side of the house in good shape and in working order.
Go ahead, Russ. It seems like, this is just taking way too long, but in defense of the chief and city manager, they both done a great job. The first month in, they were ready to go. And the under twenty-five thousand, now it seems like we're at a crossroads where it's either under or over. My only suggestion, if it's over, I heard the number forty-two hundred dollars for cabinets. My suggestion is you don't go bargain basement cabinets because you're gonna be replacing them before you know it. We don't have to have luxury equipment. I think that that's an incorrect word for what we need in the kitchen. I think it has to be a substantial set of cabinets. Don't get particle board when you can get plywood. It doesn't have to be fancy. It's a firehouse, but it has to be done right. The other thing is, if we have to go over, it might be better for the contractor to replace them all. And I know Jeff came out and said, let's try to keep the ones that are in good shape. But there's always need for storage around the firehouse. You can always mount a mountain floor somewhere for additional equipment. It always will come in handy. Don't get rid of them, recycle them, even in-house, those are, if you look at the ones that are in there, they're very substantial. They'll last another twenty years. It might be better for the contractor just to gut and go. It's a lot easier in the long run. So those are my comments. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. Well, I feel like I've made this suggestion numerous times. I've never heard a response back from everybody. But I, first of all, I do agree with Russ. We don't want something like chipboard in there. We need something more substantial. And that's why, to my experience, you go with a commercial grade stainless steel units. They come in two feet, four feet, six feet, ten feet. You can get, you can basically, within a week, you can buy all your cabinetry, set it up, and it's really, this is what you see in most community centers. You see it in most churches. And the reason is, it's a good investment. I don't know. Maybe you wanna win design awards. I have no idea. But I don't think anyone really cares. And two, I just wanna strengthen Isabelle's point. You know, we, like, our fire department, we've got, what, three to four guys on duty at any one time using that kitchen. That is actually equivalent to a family, right? So let's not overthink this. This is not, you know, we want to set them up with something nice, but it doesn't have to be, you know, bulletproof. It's gotta be just good quality. I would strongly recommend that you get a restaurant equipment salesman in here to give you some quotes, and at least have that in your pocket as one of your options.
I'm just looking at the clock, and I'm kind of astounded that we've spent fifty minutes talking about the process.
About all the cooks in the kitchen.
All the, yeah, there's a lot of cooks in the kitchen, and.
She just beat me to it.
I'm in the middle of a construction project myself, and I really appreciate and am grateful for having a contractor and somebody who knows more than me, who brings in professional people. And, you know, they spec'd out things. And the only reason I question them is because I wanted to prepare things. So on my dime, I had my office manager and my designer going out to shop for various things to make it pretty. But I don't think that the board of the community needs to get into the level of detail of what kind of refrigerator is there. I mean, leave it up to the contractor. I mean, leave it up to the contractor, leave it up to the chief. This is just, I think we're getting really deep in the weeds here. I think I would just like to suggest we need to direct staff to issue the RFP. Is that our job tonight?
I think that's, we're going to choose either the proposals, one of the proposals, or direct the staff to go to RFP. I'm basically hearing, I think that's where we're going to have to head. Anybody disagree? Could I have a motion?
No, go ahead.
I'll second the viewer.
I don't know if you will. I would like to make a motion to authorize the district manager to issue an RFP for the kitchen reconstruction with a suggested range of 40,000 dollars.
A range of what?
A suggested price tag of a range, I mean, for which to shoot, of 40,000 dollars.
Two, what's the other end of the range?
The ranges, or maximum budget is what you're saying.
It's a limit, yeah.
It's a limit, not a range.
So, we did put a number in the current budget for this, correct?
It's 60,000.
Is 40 the reasonable number?
Based on the information that I have received back, I would say no.
And I agree. Do we need to put in a number?
Maybe we should just leave a number out because these bids are going to come high, come low.
Well, or they might not come at all, if you don't specify what you're expecting to spend. In other words, this is part of the winnowing process, is it not? By putting in a limit, you're basically saying to the community of developers, do you want to bid on this or do you not want to bid on this? Isn't that what you said earlier?
Sort of, yeah.
So I would say, you know, putting a limit in there is probably a good thing to do, but I would not, I don't think 40,000 dollars is going to, is going to fly.
I mean, I think 60, if we have 60...
Since there was no second, let me try one.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
That we direct staff to move ahead with an RFP for the kitchen remodel with the goal being to create a functional and serviceable kitchen. Now, let me explain that...
With input, with your help?
Oh, I already, I will already appoint you to it tomorrow.
Okay, so is that the whole motion then?
Yes, that's the motion.
Do I hear a second?
And there is no price point at all?
I think, at least I sure heard loud and clear what our goal is. And looking at the plans, I see some things that could be adjusted to reduce it. And my concern with the maximum was that we haven't, at least I haven't decided whether we ought to have allowances for things, let the contractor put those numbers in and maybe we can do better on some of the appliances or whatever. But I don't know that we can, but I just want that ability. And all we have to do is write the word allowance for, like, say, the refrigerator.
Do you have to put that in the RFP, that we're going to do some of the work?
We're not doing any work. We may buy some, we may buy some of the appliances.
Well, that's work. Who's going to buy it? You? Me? Make sure website?
We have a motion on the table, is that correct? I clicked to second that motion.
It was already seconded, sorry. I thought I got it.
Who? Oh, no wonder I can't hear.
May I make a quick comment?
So can you repeat the motion? Verbatim, please.
An RFP for a...
We're directing staff to go out to, to go out, put out an RFP for a functional, functional, serviceable kitchen.
That's it.
Yeah.
That's it.
Excuse me, can I just make a quick comment? I don't know what the requirements are, there was a discussion of commercial versus non-commercial. I don't know if this facility has commercial coating requirements?
It does not.
It doesn't? Okay. So there'd be a venting system involved if you, you have to do that. So you really can't put, Linda, you really can't put in commercial appliances unless you...
We can.
Well, we can if you spend money, but...
But we're not permitted to be a commercial kitchen, you don't have to meet commercial...
Okay. I just want to make sure that...
...permitting standards. There's a difference between what you're saying and what she's saying.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was understood.
Anybody else want to chime in? I heard the motion is seconded. I call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
I would like my number. Next?
With four more?
Can I hear a motion to adjourn? Second. All those in favor?
Thanks, guys.